Welcome everyone. We've got all the council meeting this evening and ask if everyone could stand and have the pledge of allegiance with us. Immediately following, we'll have an invitation presented by Pastor John Murray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we want to thank you for the men and women of our town that have dedicated their time and energy, and we pray your blessing upon them. We pray your blessings upon the city of Bonner Springs. Thank you for this town, and we pray this all in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Rolling right along. I have the high honor of one of the best parts of being mayor in Bonner Springs, and that is I get to provide a proclamation. This proclamation regards Volunteer Recognition Week. So, all of you who are volunteers, if you would just stand up for me, please. And now come up here. Stand up here with me so you can get a good picture.
Picture time.
Picture time.
Don't worry, we won't hit you in the back of the head.
Let's do a pyramid.
Hello.
Safety vest clashes with my sweater. I have to...
No, please. I'm guessing clashes what?
Use the picture of the sunglasses when they enter the report.
Then he changed it on that one.
...is an element part of the essence of our tradition, of our territory, and whereas volunteerism partners with government and industry and enhances the vitality of our nation, and whereas volunteerism directly reflects the demographic principles upon which our forefathers founded this nation, is that everyone, regardless of circumstances, of station, or factors of race, age, sex, color, or creed, can volunteer. And whereas we seek even more contributions of human resources in volunteerism and better applications of these valuable contributions, as everyone is at times a provider and at other times a person in need. And whereas the volunteers of the city of Bonner Springs provide vital services for the community and are one of the city's greatest resources. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through April 21st, 2018, as Volunteer Recognition Week. Give a little, change a lot, in Bonner Springs, Kansas, to honor and thank the dedicated citizens of Bonner Springs who give so freely of their valuable time, energy, and abilities. I call upon all citizens of Bonner Springs to help renew and sustain the spirit of vitality of this great nation, to commit a portion of their time to help address the needs of their community through voluntary action. Congratulations. Everybody's on.
And probably proud enough.
The way you're getting all those people in one picture.
Thank you. I do it for general notice. The entire city appreciates all the time that everyone puts into making Bonner Springs better. Thank you.
Oh, gotta put our vests on.
I'm not sure.
I hate to say it. Gotta put our pretty vests on.
And so here's one, and hopefully they'll be up there.
Sure. Sure Scott. Mess up my sign, huh?
With the orange highlights to mine.
Yeah. Matches my hair.
No, we have to wear these now.
I gotta get off.
Okay. So, your vest's on. Oh.
This for your own as well as my sake.
I was like, man, this thing doesn't fit.
See, they had one big enough to me. Okay, we're ready. Okay, our next proclamation is for National Work Zone Awareness Week, and if I can have, not only all of us that are wearing vests, but all of the public works people, please come forward.
Gay public works?
Heyo.
Heyo.
They look like they work in their vests.
Yeah. Yeah. Ours are all shiny, and yours are all working.
Yeah, theirs are all used.
We did this kind of thing done right now. The proclamation reads, "Whereas our city workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways, and our water and wastewater systems provide our city with safe travel and water, and whereas work on city roadways requires work zones to warn and protect drivers and city work crews. And whereas about eighty-five to ninety percent of the time, the people injured in work zone crashes are motorists caused by falling too closely, inattention, speeding, and improper lane changes. And whereas in Kansas during 2017, twelve motorists were killed in work zone crashes, and four hundred and eighty-eight people were injured. And whereas there were one thousand seven hundred and fifty-one work zone crashes in Kansas last year, which was an average of four point eight work zone crashes every day. And whereas to protect our city motorists and our city workers, I call on all citizens of Bonner Springs to avoid distractions such as cell phone use and reduced speed in work zones. And whereas this year's theme, work zone safety, everybody's responsibility, reminds us that safety within work zones is a personal responsibility, and everyone must do their part to keep our work zones safe. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim April 9th through April 13th as National Work Zone Awareness Week. In the city of Bonner Springs, and encourage all residents to wear orange or go on Go Orange Day on Monday, April 9th, 2018, to increase awareness and show public works and highway workers how much their efforts are appreciated." Congratulations. Very good. Do you have any words, Dad?
You know, I always like to introduce staff real quick, so I'll take a quick rundown. Art Escobar is our newest staff employee, maintains one worker, takes care of all our meters, works out on the field, on our system. Stand next to him is Robert Bryant, Chief Plant Operator, also takes care of the distribution system out in the field. And then Blake Tuttle, new plant operator, and takes care of collection system out in the field. So, all these guys work out there. We try to keep them safe out in the field and here in our presence.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that you guys do.
Mass Exodus.
Well...
I'm gonna take my thoughts and hopefully all you guys with your pairs on.
Did you say how did you do?
No.
He said leave them on. He said leave them on.
You're getting hot.
This is heating you up.
Yeah, I was just thinking, what? Are you...
All right. Very good. Continuing on to citizen concerns about items not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to stand and speak about issues not on tonight's agenda and address the full city council? Yes, please.
Item number one.
If you would state your...
My name is George Cooper, 126 Maple. The graffiti situation, we all know what's going on. I've done, took care of some of it in my neighborhood, but there's other places that, you know, if I could get some of that stuff that takes it off concrete, I'd do Mrs. Sedgwick's wall, Mrs. Tool's stairs, and it's bad. And if somebody will run me out there, I have paint, I'll do that building out there. That building's our building, the one that, by the railroad. Even if it's not, somebody from the city take me out there so the railroad don't arrest me for being on their property. And I'll paint that sucker this week. It just looks atrocious. It's not a good thing for our city. You know, this is Bonner. This isn't Armoredale. This isn't Argentina, not to disparage your fine people down there, but it just needs to be addressed. I don't know how many officers work at night on the weekend. You think we could find, catch these son of a guns and look on the cameras of Woods's Liquor when they did that, maybe yours? It's just, it's not a good look for our city. And that's all I have on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a point of information, we did make a police report today. There were some, an individual that we saw on the security cams that we passed along to the police department. We don't have a record of the actual graffiti, but they at least had somebody to look at. From what I understood, there were seven or eight different spots that had graffiti put on it over late Saturday night, early Sunday morning. And so they're going through that process. And I encourage everyone who had their property vandalized to contact the police department and make a police report, and then certainly take care of it as soon as they can. Graffiti breeds very quickly, so the quicker you can remedy it, the better. And with helpful citizens like Mr. Cooper, I appreciate all that help. Thank you. Yes. Sir?
Yes, Travis Slanker, 411 Alt Cut. I've actually waited quite a while to get George Cooper back in this room. So, we lost a member of the community last year, Mr. Kenny Tool, and while George Cooper was a council member, he proposed that we honorarily name a street after Mr. Tool. Everyone seemed very gung ho about that, and it's been, I don't know, thirteen months, fourteen months, and I haven't heard any update on that. So, I thought, while everyone was here, I would bring it up and just kind of see where we're at on that.
Great. I don't have any report for you. We'll look into it. Get back to you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. We'll move right along to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes minutes of the March 26th city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and appointments to boards and commissions. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Anything to be pulled by the city staff, citizens?
I'd like to discuss number seven.
Number seven. All right, we'll pull that. Anything else from the council? Seeing none.
Do we need to amend that motion then, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, we'll, yes. I should have went out of order. Yes.
I will amend my motion to pull item number seven for further discussion.
And I will amend my second.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Early?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
All right. Number seven, appointments to boards and commissions. Don't necessarily have a staff recommendation or a presentation, but go ahead and have a comment.
You know, my concern is this. I brought this up years ago when I was over the council about the library board, people being put on. Was there anybody else? I asked, was anybody else? And you thought I would have done something in church that was terrible when I brought it up. And they told me at the time, nobody else could do it. Okay. Well, the statute, which I've read a bunch, it says that you want a diverse group of people of varying backgrounds, eco, economic, social, and we have that. And I believe we have that. Now, it also says that you beg black people to understand city government and taxation and so forth. Well, statute 12, clearly 122222, it's about term limits, but in Kansas, House Representatives and Senate has put in there for term limits. You can serve two, four-year terms, then you have to come off. Well, and that's fine, but what they do up there is, once you're off that gear, like a little sabbatical, you're right back on. There's no consideration of anybody else. I put in to be on the library board. Figure I'm highly qualified. Everybody here knows I'm a librarian, or I've been involved from day one. So, the library board meets, and there's no discussion of all the people. It's just, well, we're gonna bring back the guy that's been gone a year. And I think that that takes away from the spirit of one, the diverse group. You need some new blood now and then. There's people been on that library board forever behind this thing. I mean, a lot, a lot of years, and I'm not disparaging the job they do. Sometimes the new blood helps. And they had the term limits for a reason. And I would, you know, if they wanted to pick somebody over me, but I would like of being discussed as a qualified candidate to be on that library board, and it didn't happen. It's just, this is what we've done it forever, and we're gonna just bring that guy back so he can come for another eight years, you know, sixteen years. And some of them got all over that. So, I'm just saying, it's legal, but I don't think it's fair. And that's all I can say about that.
Well, I appreciate your interest and concern. The library board brings these suggestions to the city council, and the applicants or the volunteers that have asked to be a part of it, as you well know, have signed up. So, that was discussed... Well, I would imagine the library board, with them bringing this... Well, the library board brought the suggestion for the two reapport, or the reappointment and the new appointment to us, so there was some discussion of it.
There was no discussion at that board meeting of the people, other than the guy who's just kind of been off a year and he's gonna go back on, and that's the way we do it. And they don't even discuss the other people that were left, like myself. You know? And discuss.
Well, very good. It's good to know there's a lot of interest in the library, and I appreciate that.
I'm eighty years old when somebody dies, so, you know, there it is. I'm not doing it. I did this for eight years, and that was time enough for me. And I had time in my life to do this, but I'm not gonna wait forever, you know, library board. And I just think it's their own little world, their own little bytem. You know, if you go to our church, you can get on it, or stuff like that. And I'm sorry I say that, but I see things different, and they didn't even discuss the other people. They just automatically bring back the other one that's been gone. He took his year sabbatical, so it's time for him to come back for eight more years. And the next time it happens, it's just, it's the same circle. And they never discuss any new people. And they bring it to you to vote on. And it's always been, I realize that, and that's what they recommend. I'm just saying.
Thank you. You're right. I didn't, we didn't go over all the other volunteers that requested, because as mayor, one of the positions that you are required to sit on is the library board. And I know that Alan Holder was seeking new appointment, or reappointment, and that was mentioned, but there was no mention of other... And they were very appreciative of his volunteering in the past, and the opportunity to have him with his experiences come back to the board. Nothing was said about anybody else. I appreciate that, and I know your concern, so, thank you.
But in the spirit of the term limits, you tend to discuss other people instead of just the way we've always done it here in Bonner Springs Library Board. We bring the person back because we keep our little club going. And no, but no new blood, no new, no new thinking, you know?
I recognize that's the way you feel, and I appreciate that.
And I know how it is, because that's the way we always do it. That's what we're gonna do.
I appreciate you. That's the way you feel.
The term limit, what it says in the beginning of the statute about, as a diverse group of people with experience, and that's all I'm saying, you know? So, we flipped the guy back on, but I just wanted to bring that up. That's all.
Very good.
Thank you. Everybody's got a...
Thank you.
Bluster, is that what you said?
You betcha.
Thank you.
Bluster for a while, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I would like to entertain a motion concerning item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the appointments to boards and commissions.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
I just want to comment on one thing. I think Mr. Cooper kind of, a little bit disparaging the council. As a council, when appointments come forward, the appointments are actually made by the mayor based upon the recommendation of the commissions and the different groups. The council's position is not to be the decision makers on who should or shouldn't be on something. The only time we would try to block an appointment is if we saw an appointee we had a serious objection with that appointee, not with the process that put them there. The individual that he's talking about, extremely highly qualified, I have, don't see a reason why I would object to him as a council member, so. I just think it's important they understand it's not a rubber stamp. We're here to approve, or I should say disapprove, if we see a reason why. I think it's important to set the record straight on that.
I'm good.
Seeing nothing else? Vote, please.
Steven?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Early? Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Yes.
Say something, you're sitting in the water.
On to item number eight, the acceptance of public improvements for Coleman Industrial Park Two. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, Don Swann, City Planner, Bonner Springs City Council. This project seems to have been going on forever, ever since. We actually did a pre-construction meeting in August. The weather got us, but it's finally here. This project is related to the King Kate Midwest Bus Project. There's one condition remaining that the contractors, part of releasing way from a clean, we're waiting on. That's being held up a little bit. Water One, Water One is okay with what we've done with the disconduit, so they just want to make sure they escrow the funds and contract bigger leases in order to do that. But I wanted to get it through us from the council to get finished so that it's... As a city planner, as well as a city engineer backed by the Public Works Department, we recommend and accept this by the headway.
Thank you. Anything to add by the citizens this evening? Any comments concerning this item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the public improvement for Coleman Industrial Park Number Two, subject to the condition listed in the staff report.
Second. Seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
What were the funds escrowed for? For the escrowing of the funds? What were they worried about? Didn't understand that part.
They escrowed the funds because of the two-party deal. King Kate Midwest Bus, King Kate Properties, actually in conjunction with Coleman Properties P.
Yeah.
It was a joint venture. In order to keep it, they wanted it escrowed, so they escrowed the funds. So, the funds are sitting there to pay the final contract.
Gotcha.
That release is subject to part of the lease award.
Ah, okay. Thank you, sir.
I was just curious, on the street improvements, is that an overlay, or are we putting a new street? And if so, where we got curbs and gutters, or what? Is it heavy enough, of course, to withstand the truck traffic that's out there?
To answer the question, it's five hundred and fifty feet of new street. It's got eighteen inches of base. It's got curb and gutter, and it's got nine inches of asphalt that will withstand a new street.
And what, and a fire hydrant?
Yeah, that was, that was, they did. We got two new fire hydrants actually out there, and off that twelve-inch water line, so it's ready to go.
Very good. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. On to item number nine, which is the city's property mowing services bid. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, for council, for works director. The side pertaining to the mowing that we contract out, we've got about a hundred and thirty acres we contract out, about thirty percent of this contract, various properties, the cemetery being the largest, about fifteen acres, about half of the, half of the contracted out. Escapes LLC came in with the award bid this year in 2086. Fifty, that is a weekly bid, cut all the properties one time. Some of the properties, we actually cut every other week, but in order to bring these bids in, we set the pricing for the contractors to take a look at the twenty properties that we have on this bid on list and award this bid to the lowest bidder on those lots. The total estimated for the year, if we do cut on schedule, weekly and biweekly, and some of that's weather-related, is sixty thousand dollars. That's on the financial impact of how that breaks down between the cemetery and various departments. As you can see, it's share, various departments to the city. Once again, the cemetery is taking the bulk of the year. We recommend the reward to Escapes LLC for the mowing services. We do not enter into a long-term contract with them, so we're not asking for a dollar amount on the award. It's just a matter of rewarding the mowing services to Escapes LLC.
Very good. Any additional from the citizens? Concerns, comments? Input? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the city property mowing services contract to Escapes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? Please.
My question there says, weekly rates. Are there some weeks in the summer due to dry weather possibly that we will not have a mowing surface, or is it just every week?
You know, they set up the mow every week. Last year, we did not actually hit any weeks where we didn't mow. It's always a judgment call on our part and their part, because if they miss a week, and then there's weather the next week, now you're two weeks out, and now the grass starts looking pretty shattered. So, typically, we go into it with a thought process that they're gonna mow these, everything. All our costs are based on those weekly mows. I think we've got nine, the cemetery's weekly, and then there's nine other properties that we're cutting on a weekly basis that are high public visible properties or within other residential areas that we want to maintain our properties as well as we possibly can. The other eleven properties are, can be mowed every other week. Doesn't seem to create an issue.
Seems like the homework has been done. I mean, right there, you know?
How'd that compare to last year's? Was it...
Actually low.
Low? I like that.
Which was our contractor last year.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Sir? No? Nothing else? Vote, please.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
On to agenda item number ten, our city manager's report.
Following up, Mr. Kip asked about project schedule for SFS that relates to Government Services Center. That's included in the report and is breaking down as to how they will be working through the next several months designing that facility with the completion date there scheduled for 12/7/2012. Also, I want to point out, there is also a flyer, I think it's the last item for the Bonner Beautiful Spring Clean-up. It's due on 21st, 8:30. You're asked if you'd like to attend to the community center between 8:00 and 8:30 to get the pair going out. I just also want to point out, Co-Dees as well, Service Base Coffee, for their partnership with the library and those parks directly, and the city departments in this going for this year. Also, what I noticed, seeing bright yellow flying around on the 12th this month, is a helicopter being used by Westarts to complete inspections on the transmission lines that come through Bonner Springs. So, I think that will take place on the 12th, with these slow, low-flying helicopters.
Thank you for letting us know.
And if anybody calls.
Chris, if you were on a Twitter account and you were hooked to the Bonner Springs Police Department, they said I had a tweet this afternoon about it.
Oh. It's an offer for free tinfoil hats?
They weren't offering rides, though.
Thank you very much. Lends us to city council items. We'll start down here. Sir?
Yes, I had a letter from Crystal Thomas about some problems she's had...
Yes, I had a letter from Crystal Thomas about some problems she's had with her property in the past. If we could put that on our agenda for a meeting, that we could talk about that in the future. Are you aware of that letter, so we can talk about that in a workshop?
If it can be added, that's fine. I would ask probably to have NPR at that, which is our insurance provider, to discuss that meeting as well, so I'd have to coordinate that to make sure that they do that.
Week four last, I sat on the Bonner Springs High School site council, and variable, very enjoyable afternoon. Mr. Brumgarde, our superintendent Brumgarde, gave a nice presentation of the planned additions to the high school, and it's quite extensive. So if you've got kids coming up, be ready, excited, because it'll be nice. Secondly, myself and Councilman Shannon took a tour of the 1918 building last week. And I would, I'm not a inspector, be a layman by all means, but I would recommend everybody maybe take a tour. There were some things in there that really concerned me from a safety standpoint, exposed electrical wiring. There are things that were done wiring-wise that you and I wouldn't be allowed to do in our homes. Extremely tight corridors that would make, you know, EMT calls almost impossible to make. And I'm always concerned about that. You know that when it comes to safety of our residents and people visiting our city, that's always a big concern of mine. I would recommend everybody take, get a tour of that building and possibly maybe see about, if your recommendation is the same as mine, the opinion, maybe have staff look into having a proper service, give us an estimate or valuation of that facility. I'm really concerned about it.
As relates to its current use?
As its current use.
And you arrange those through the city manager? Can you arrange those tours through the city manager?
Yes, I did.
Could we arrange one as a board to go through? Because then the conversation, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's kind of a moving meeting, so that would be the issue, coordinating that, to try to have.
In groups of three, I would imagine.
I mean, would it be better to send our inspector in? Jordan might have expertise in it, but what are we going to add? I mean, if he reports to us, or he or she, whoever does that.
That's certainly something we can do.
If it's out of code, or whatever it needs to be, I mean, I'm happy to go, but I don't see what value.
Yeah, I think if you're all there, it's, we can certainly arrange it out there.
I mean, if there's concerns, and there's something that we can be liable for, it's our building, I mean.
Mr. Stevens, what are you wanting to address? Like the size of the?
Safety concerns? General safety concerns?
Just general safety concerns. You know, I'm not an expert, so I don't want to sit here and give opinions on they need to do X, Y, Z, but I, there was enough to make me concerned that I think that we need to have somebody with a proper background, the credentials, to go in there and do a proper evaluation.
Are you worried about it from SFF? SF? I can't speak. What is the name of the company that's doing that?
SFS Architects.
Yeah.
Not so much them, as much as come October, if we have large groups of people. I think my personal opinion is we've been very fortunate over the last several years that we haven't had an incident. And I always think back to a few years back, Oakland. And I do not want to be the next city that is trying to explain to the public why we failed to take proper action.
Yeah, as you mentioned, have an insurance problem.
So is the situation that we have to fix it up before we can fix it? I mean, before we can?
Again, we're back to, I think, experts.
I think the question is more related to whether or not the correct, understanding it correctly, the correct use of the facility, and whether or not any of the changes have any safety issues. Not so many, right? I can certainly have our building inspector look into that. I think we'll just go ahead and do that based on your comments.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec update, Easter egg hunt. I didn't get to go to the dog hunt or the teen hunt, but I heard great things. I did have two very happy children attend, and there was lots of people, lots of great volunteers. So Skip, thank you and all your people for, it was a great break in the weather, thank goodness. And I don't know how many you had there, but there was a lot of kids.
He can tell us.
Smart man.
Ah, that's a new record.
Wow, that's great. Wow.
I saw a lot of them leaving happily, so that was a neat event, and pictures with the bunny and the whole deal. So thanks to all the volunteers that were out there doing all that. And I think we get some more nice weather coming up in the next three days, so get out and use all the new Parks and Rec equipment that they spent money on. That's all I have.
Skip, on the annual report that you provided, which was fantastic, the pool attendance was way up last year. Do we know what percentage of residents versus visitors that was?
Not exactly, because when you come and pay a day内的fee, it's the same amount whether you're a resident or non-resident. As far as our memberships, it's more closely to like a 55, 45, 60, 40, more resident than non-resident.
Oh, that's good.
The membership, family membership. And so, as far as the day内的fee.
And Sean, I know we talked about 138 Street in the workshop, being a couple of years out. I've had a couple of calls about the condition. Is it on the list of roads to be addressed?
Well, we would still go through and make possible repairs and things like that that are typical. Allows us to do, so we're still maintaining the street. We're just, we're not looking to do anything significant on the street as far as probably chips and like that.
It's getting pretty rough. Yeah, it's getting a little rough. Okay.
Well, can I?
Please.
If I can apologize, I hijacked. But since we're looking at currently only come to Morris, what would be going north from Morris to Metropolitan? Because that is extremely in bad shape, too.
As far, I mean, part of that was repaired or replaced. You know, I don't have a date.
Two years ago.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Except for Metropolitan, this is phase one, but that's phase two.
Please tell her thank you, because that was great.
Yes, like I told you.
Wonderful.
No, that's okay.
I was so impressed with the 2017 reports all the way through. Very clear and very revealing of how much we have to thank people for, for doing all of those things that they are doing. It's wonderful. Now, I did wonder about the vandalism report. Where was I just? I just had it. There was a lot of vandalism.
This last weekend or over the last year?
$5,000.
Throughout the year.
It got worse towards the end of the year, then.
At the community center?
Lions Park bathrooms were their main target.
Oh, okay.
And all the sand pits that we put up there.
All right. And there are no cameras that can't be, yeah. Okay.
I know the police has, and they moved some temporary ones around, and they did catch some of the kids that broke the mirrors and the bulletin board, and they are being prosecuted now.
Okay. It just makes the point that we need the police in the center of the city. That's to me, you know, tremendously.
So annoying.
No, I'm finished.
All right, sir.
I'm going to comment pretty quickly.
Very good. I appreciate all those. On to the mayor's report. Piggybacking on some of those things, I'd like to compliment all the different reports that were received as part of the annual report. The annual report and the different department updates are phenomenal. And I'd appreciate if, I know a lot of that information is on the website from years past, and if those different aspects can be updated. And then with the inclusion of the annual report, which will be a welcome addition to the website. I was able to take a good portion of information off the website for our many state of the city address that we had for the Chamber of Commerce this last week before last, and it was real well-received. So I appreciate all the information that's on there and encourage everyone to go out and look at the website if they have any questions. The budget, our award-winning budget is on there available for everyone to take advantage of and see where all your hard-earned money that is paid in property taxes, to the tune of 21% of the total property tax bill goes towards Bonner Springs. But also indication of what all of our other revenues that we receive, the sales tax and property tax, the majority of what Bonner Springs operates on. Also, the status of Riverview, is there more information on what the status of that road project is?
The, we're planning on getting the asphalt down in the next week. The road, there's been some cars driving over it. It's got gravel down, some bays down, but they need to finish it. We had a meeting last week, and it's asphalt work, that's about all.
Very good. All right. Yeah, and Easter comes early in Bonner Springs. That was probably one of your claims to fame with the perfect weather, and I think you should utilize that. With having it snow for the last two Sundays, doing it on the week before really turned out in Bonner Springs benefits. So thank you very much for all the Parks and Rec creation. I've received nothing but compliments on all of that, so. Also had an opportunity this last week to join Mayor McTaggart from Edwardsville and Mayor Sly James from Kansas City, Missouri, in recognizing the National Day of Service, which recognizes all of the volunteer efforts put forth by many different groups, which are evading me right at the moment, most of which are administrated by the United Way through different organizations. Some the foster grandparents, as well as the daycare, or the in-home visiting helpers, I guess is what it's called, where someone will go in and sit with an elderly person during the day when their family can't be there. It's a very worthwhile service, as well as the Vista program and some of the other, AmeriCorps, which does a lot of volunteer in some of the major programs. Here locally, our senior center assists with one of those programs where they tutor the second graders in reading once a week, and they've had a lot of hours put in, in a great program. So I was happy to be a part of that. Other than that, there's been, just the spring has sprung in Bonner Springs, and some of the projects that appear to have been sitting dormant for a while are starting to have more life, more interest in them. The Dollar General is moving down to the Bonner Shops Mall. That's a work in progress. There are signages working towards its completion and along that way, as well as a new Italian food pizza restaurant up on Seven Highway, Villas up at I-70 in Kent and Seven Highway, which will have pizzas, I believe, and their opening will be soon. I don't know exactly when, but soon. So unless there's anyone else with questions for me? Yes, sir. Please.
April 21st, the Bonner Springs Bonner Beautiful Cleanup, is something that the community really gets behind. I had one question about that. Is there going to be a dumpster for that event? There usually is, most of the time, but I don't know if there is this year.
Bags will be left on the side of the road in designated areas, and public works will be around, pick them up.
I think what you mean, in the past, has been dumpster left at Lions Park for people to bring their tree limbs and other things down there.
We have a plan for that.
My question, exactly.
This is a work in progress, a continuation of a program that the city did for many years that's been rejuvenated with new volunteerism, and so we're looking forward to that being a part of Bonner Springs and then continuing that spring cleanup. So things have changed a little bit. Very good. Hope to challenge everybody that is able to, to be a part of that. Unless there's anything else, we have, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. We have an executive session, so we'll do that after adjournment, or?
I would recess for a few minutes and then.
Come back and have the final. We're going to go ahead and recess for an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters. Those of you are welcome to step outside and come back afterwards. This will be for a period of 20, 10 minutes, where no action will be done, but we'll come back and adjourn the meeting. So you're welcome to come back if you would like. Otherwise, we're going into recess.
Need a motion?
I need a motion to go into the executive session, and it has to be worded exactly.
Do you need a motion to go into recess?
Yes.
We can do it after recess, Scott. This is what we're recessing for.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess until 8:25, at which time we'll reconvene for an executive session.
Okay. Second, for the recess, and all those in favor?
Aye.